Good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, the 26th of January. It is, I believe, about 7:05 PM. And this is the regular meeting of the Common Council of the City of Platteville. And we're holding this tonight via Zoom. Although I do see that Adam is in the council chambers. Adam, is there anybody with you?
Just Lieutenant Bravant is here with me.
Okay, very good. Candace? We'll start with roll call, and I've lost where... There you are. Kathy Kopp?
Here.
Jason Arts?
Here.
Barbara Doss?
Here.
Ken Killian? Oh, I do see him. Just unmute yourself. All right, thank you. Robin Klein? Isaac Shanley?
Here.
Eileen Nichols?
Here.
Great, thank you. The first item on our agenda tonight is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature or previous discussion. Please indicate if you would prefer separate discussion and action. And action. First, we have council meetings from council minutes from the last meeting, January 12th, regular meeting. We have payment of bills. We have appointments to boards and commissions. And tonight, I am appointing the first 10 people to our tide committee, our task force on inclusivity, diversity, and equity. And Candace, I will send these names to you. Jeans Milwaukee, Emily Zachary, Brandon Snyder, Keith Custer, Wayne Woodars, representing the chamber, Honesty Rundy, representing the Southwest Wisconsin Rainbow Alliance, Hila Cockaday, Jessie Lee Jones, who is one of our staff members, and Robin Klein and Jason Arts. Those will be the initial 10 people. And I would mention that it's not limited to 10. And we're hopeful that as the task force begins its meetings and its business and its actions, that others will perhaps join. The other appointment I have tonight is that of Joanne Wilson, Dr. Joanne Wilson, to the Housing Authority Board. And that will be for a five-year term. So those are the appointments tonight. Our licenses, we had one- and two-year operator licenses to sell and serve alcohol and a taxi driver license in the packet. And then a banner permit from the United Way of Platteville, the banner to hang from September 13th to October 31st. Your pleasure.
Move to approve the consent calendar as presented with the appointees.
My second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar and appointments. Candace will vote. Kopp?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, the next item on our agenda is citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any. And I don't believe that we have any folks that have approached me about speaking at this time. Any Adam or Candace, anybody approached you about speaking at this time? Otherwise, I think we're ready to move on. Okay. Reports that were in your packet include that from the tourism committee. Jason, anything to add?
Nothing to add.
Historic Preservation Commission, Mr. Killian?
No addition.
The Museum Board, Eileen?
I would just like to note that if you go to the museum website, you will find information on the upcoming lyceum programs. And the first one will be February 7th. You can register online. And that first report is about Rollo Jameson. As everybody knows, maybe not everybody, but this year is the 40th year celebration of the Rollo Jameson Museum actually locating in Platteville. So there's going to be, that will be the first lyceum. There are a total of seven lyceums. And you can find all that information online.
Okay, thank you. Library Board, Robin?
I don't have anything to add.
Housing Authority Board, Ken?
No addition.
Solid Waste and Recycle Task Force, Robin?
Just that we're moving along with plans for a community swap and look for details. But we're hoping that it will be quite an event, so we'll be calling, or we are, I will make this call right now for volunteers to help with that day. Kind of, I think we can offer up first dibs on items that are brought in if you're a volunteer in some effect. So we're looking for a good crowd of people to help out with that event. So I'll put that up there. Stay tuned.
Okay, thank you, Robin. Airport Commission, Kathy?
Nothing further than.
And the Community Safe Routes Commission, Jason?
Just that last night, we met and hopefully the committee will have a option three to present to council members to review prior to the February 9th meeting.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, those are the reports. We're now into the information and discussion items on our agenda. There are no action items tonight. So the first of the information and discussion items is an ordinance repealing and recreating Section 2.03 polling places. Candace?
Right, so in 2020, the city of Platteville was informed that the armory was no longer available. Luckily for us, we have a nice new building that is now what we call the Brasky Center at 1155 North Second Street. So we have moved, relocated that polling location from the armory to the Brasky Center. We did that for the 2020 elections in August and November. But we would like to continue using that and make that the permanent location for districts, well, it'd be wards 1, 2, 3, 4, 7, 8, and 9. 9 is actually the airport, if anybody is wondering. I mean, nobody technically lives out there. So that's districts 1, 2, and 4. So future elections, that's where we're wanting to have them located at. We would still continue to use the Alsvick location on campus for District 3, which is wards 5 and 6. So just updating our ordinance, our municipal code to reflect that change. And you can see that change with the attached document that is yeah, attached right there. So just just changing to the Brasky Center.
Okay. Any questions from council members? Wave your hand if you have a question. Council members. This is pretty standard. We voted there last, we voted there the last couple elections. So, yeah. So I don't think it'll be new to people, but it's great to update our ordinance. So that'll be on for action at the next meeting. Okay, item B under information and discussion is lot consolidation, lots 39 through 43 in the Platteville Industry Park. And Joe prepared the staff note. And I also see that Hila is here from the Platteville, I think I saw Hila, from Platteville Area Industrial Development Corporation. And we have other guests. So Joe, we'll go to you first.
Okay, yeah, and actually, I'll cover items B and C on the agenda are both related to the same matter. So I'll cover both of those. The lot consolidation is mentioned, it's for lots 39 through 43 in the industry park. So basically, there's five lots on the southwest corner Vision Drive and East Side Road in our industry park. It would be Industry Park Lot 7, which is the newest part of the industry park. And it'd be located in 10-6. So the proposal is to consolidate those five lots into one lot to prepare for a sale for a development purposes. So the total area, it's all vacant. They're all five vacant lots at the moment. Cover just under 21 acres that would be available for development. So essentially, they'd have frontage on Vision Drive and East Side Road. And the lots are planted, but obviously unimproved. We've got some utilities internal to a couple of those lots that would have to be relocated. But otherwise, it's basically from a plat purpose, it would just be removing the internal lot lines. So it's pretty straightforward from that standpoint. But the reason that we're proposing to do that is because we do have a developer purchaser that's interested in that entire 21 acres. So the idea would be to prepare that to sell to Skanel Properties, would be the purchaser and the developer of those properties. Their proposal is to develop approximately 342,000 square foot warehouse distribution facility on that property. They are a developer that would basically do a build-to-suit construction on that property for their client, who at this point desires to remain confidential. But as they're doing their additional due diligence and obviously some other legal matters and in addition to these approvals, until that is taken care of, they'd like to remain anonymous. But there are several folks here from Skanel Properties that can provide some additional information on their company. But in addition, primarily, it's a warehouse distribution facility. But there would be some administrative offices within the building and an area for light assembly as well. And obviously, some exterior storage area and exterior truck parking area in addition to the parking for the employees. So they would build it, lease it to their client on an approximately 10-year lease and then optional leases beyond that. And I'll let them give some additional information as they desire. But as I mentioned, from the lot consolidation standpoint, it's a pretty straightforward request. Obviously, the lots, the new lot will meet all of our standards as far as size and frontage and so forth. The proposed use as a warehouse distribution facility is in compliance with our zoning ordinance as well as our comprehensive plan, so there's no issues with zoning, no additional approvals that will be needed from a zoning standpoint. The land sale itself will be in compliance or accordance with the land price formula, which is what we use for sale of land in the industry park. So basically, as a base sale price or land value of $67,500 per acre. And then the ultimate land sale price will be dependent on the value of the improvements that are created on that property, the number of jobs created, and the pay scale for the jobs that are created. So when it's all factored in, they theoretically could get the land down to a dollar an acre. So that is the request for both of those. The only conditions that we would have on the lot consolidation, since we're basically working off the existing plat, we would have to have a actual certified survey map drawing that would be created and that would have to be recorded before it becomes officially one lot. So that would be the only condition for that. And then obviously, the sale would be conditioned on the land price formula. So any questions for me? Otherwise, we do have some representatives from Skanel Properties that have some additional information.
So Joe, I think we'll start by having the reps from Skanel. And Hila or Adam, one of you, would you like to introduce our guests? I should have, I should have asked who was going to do that. Adam, do you want to do it?
Sure, I can take that one here. I think the first one I will probably introduce, and I'm kind of looking through the crowd here to see. Did I see Patrick is on the call somewhere? Did I see that? Are you?
Yes, I am, Adam. Thank you.
So I will let, I will let Patrick, obviously, you know, Paydick and city staff have been working with Skanel for probably a couple of months now, kind of going back and forth on some, some good quality due diligence meetings and then getting to know each other. And this is kind of the first chance that now goes in front of the council. So I will let kind of Patrick take it away and introduce anybody he would like to introduce.
Great, well, thanks to everybody and a good evening. We certainly appreciate your time. I'm one of the directors of development for Skanel Properties, who will be leading the project with our team, who are present tonight. Dan Harrington will be our senior development manager on the proposed project. Dave Duncan, we have with us this evening, who will be running legal on the proposed project, as well as Chris Carlino, who will be another development manager on the proposed project. Joe, you covered, covered it extensively. I think I just have, you know, a few more points to make on the, on the project. And then we'll open it up for questions if, if appropriate. Adam and Joe, we'd like to give you guys a short presentation on it that will show some renderings, the site plan of the building, and kind of give you an idea on what this facility is all about.
Sounds good.
Patrick, are you trying to share your screen?
I, I am, yes.
Who's the host here who has to give him ability to do that?
He has the capability to do it.
Okay, he's got it, okay.
Okay, can you see my screen now?
Nope.
Not yet.
Okay. You guys able to see the screen now?
Yeah.
Okay. So again, we'll just quickly cover the proposed project, give you an overview, as well as an overview of Skanel Properties. And then just open it up to questions. I don't want to be too redundant. We'll walk through these, a couple added points to Joe's narrative there. This will be a new Class A warehouse and distribution facility that in total is 342,000 square feet, to include 10,000 square feet of office. As Joe mentioned, it'll be located on the 20 acres as described as Lot 39 through 43 in the Platteville Industry Park. It will be occupied by a US-based Fortune 500 company, which is a known brand name to many of us who has global operations. But as of now, we've been asked to keep that confidential. The total project investment will be estimated about $20 million with other personal property estimates we'll provide at a future date. The job creation for the area, they are committing to 200 to 220 full-time jobs. And so just to clarify, that will be employees working at the new facility. That doesn't include, you know, potential other jobs created, be it contract jobs, be it trades, who will be involved with the development and construction of the facility for the roughly year development it'll take to bring the proposed facility to operation. Currently, it is scheduled to start, if approved, in, in April of this year. And a target completion date will be March of 2022, when they'll be fully operational. Skanel Properties is, is the developer. And I'll provide all of you a little bit more of a background of who we are. This is the proposed, the, the subject site. You will see that it's on the corner of Vision Drive and East Side Road. As Joe mentioned, it will require us to merge the lots 39, 40, 41 through 43, basically getting rid of the interior lot lines. And what we're looking at here is a first draft of the site plan. There's already been a few iterations to improve on this. But this is basically conceptually what the project will look like. Again, 342,000 square feet, consisting of office, some small assemblage, an outdoor storage facility of 20,000 square feet. The building height will be 36 foot clear. So the building would be roughly about 40 feet high. It will accommodate roughly 200 auto parks for which the auto access will be coming off of East Side Road, which is proposed. And the trucks will be entering the site north off of Vision Drive Road will enter the site. And then they will also exit on, on East Side Road. I will reiterate, this is a preliminary site plan. So we are still working through the, the engineering inefficiencies. And we'll be seeing this at a later date. The detention will actually reside off of our premises. It will just reside south of here, where it's been master planned and backchecked for the drainage to, to go south of our, our site. So this does misrepresent the, the detention. It'll actually be off-site detention, which is already master planned in the park. Any questions so far that I can answer? Okay, we'll proceed through the presentation, then we can take questions after. This is a sample rendering. This has not been finalized yet. These are sample renderings for which we're looking at the facade of, of the building. Here's another sample rendering. Likely have a corner office with similar glass and glazing and entryways into the office. And as you can see, it's a, you know, Class A tilt-wall concrete building. A little bit of background on, on Skanel Properties. We have been around for 30 years. We're an Indianapolis-based company with six regional offices across the country, kind of covering from the east to west and in between. The majority of our team works and out of our Indianapolis office. We, we do about 35 to 40 build-to-suits, similar to the project, the proposed project that we're talking about this evening. We build facilities from 100,000 square feet to Amazons that are now over 3 million square feet. So we, we have an in-house team of architects and our legal department, capital department, and construction management, as well as property management. We really pride ourselves on our repeat business, corporate repeat business. In fact, about 60 to 65% of all of our clients are repeat clients. We've had the honor to do about 185 FedEx facilities across the country over the past 30 years. And we have a lot of corporate clients like GE Performance Food Group, Amazon, and a lot of food-grade facilities as well. A pretty diverse portfolio of products, but really driven by our corporate relationships and our corporate clients. This is just to give you a quick snapshot of, of our corporate clients, repeat clients. This is a sampling of our completed developments across the US. And this just gives you another idea of some of the looks, the fit and finishes of our buildings. This is a Nestle project. We completed last year in Appleton, Wisconsin, 300,000 square feet. An Amazon facility we completed in Greenwood, Indiana. Two GE facilities. These are manufacturing, advanced manufacturing facilities that were done in Alabama. And two different FedEx facilities. So it might just be helpful to give you an idea of similar facility that we're proposing, as well as Platteville. It's kind of the fit and finishes of what this may look like. Open it up to any questions anybody may have at this time?
Questions? You know, it probably is just as easy if I start around and just ask if anyone has questions on the council. Isaac, do you have any questions?
No questions at this time.
Okay. Kathy, do you have any questions?
Um, I'd just like to make a comment for egress off of East Side with the traffic. Is it anticipated to use Business 151 or East Side Road to Highway 80 South? And the only reason I bring that up is that I don't, I don't have the date, but I did see that DOT is looking at making or doing construction and some possible improvements to Highway 80 South. Just for information if that might help with some of the planning.
Kathy, great, great question. And some of those answers are still being determined. You know, obviously, auto traffic is going out of East Side Road. But those are still talks that we're, we're having in engineering right now.
Okay. Eileen, do you have questions?
No questions.
Ken, do you have questions?
No questions. I do have one, but I'll ask the city manager first.
Okay. And Jason, any questions?
One question. The, the 200 to 220 job range, is that guaranteed?
For right now, it's, it's an estimated employee count, but it will fall between the range of 2, 2 to 220 full-time jobs.
Okay, great. And then I also wanted to ask about the environmental, excuse me, the environmental impact of the building in terms of like energy efficiency, all of that stuff?
Yeah, so specifically to solar or what, did you have something specific?
Or like anything in terms of like lead certification or?
Yeah, you know, at, at this time, we are not pursuing lead certification, but we're still fleshing out the scope, whether the client wants to pursue that or, or not at this time. So probably a question we, we can have answered in, in the second meeting.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Robin, any questions?
Yeah, I'm just trying to decide the right level of questioning at this point in the game. And kind of to Jason's breadth, I guess, is that I'm curious about the level of pay on those jobs that are coming in and if they're sustainable wages. And then advocating for, you know, adequate break rooms and all those sorts of things. So I'm sure we'll get a little more nitty-gritty, but the part that I'm most excited about is that you're interested in Platteville, which we all love. But I was curious kind of what the biggest driving force is for you all choosing this location and what you're kind of still hoping for or looking for from our community.
Yeah, so no, we're, we're very excited as well. I know our client is extremely excited. With answering part of that question, I would be running the risk, I think, of breaking our confidentiality agreement of disclosing some of that. I think we'd be able to connect some dots. So if okay with you, we'll, we'll pass on some of those questions just to, out of respect for the confidentiality agreement. And I think be able to answer those in subsequent meetings. And I don't mean to avoid the, the question. It's just that if I do, it'll, I don't think we'll run the risk of providing who the occupier is.
We're not looking to take risks at this point. We're, we're excited that you're hearing the conversation, so thank you.
I, I appreciate it. And, you know, just to answer, I, I won't speak specifically to the wage range, but I will tell you that it's, those are sustainable jobs that, you know, will run probably the term of, of the length of the occupier being 10 years and two other renewals, which will get them to almost another 10 years in very competitive wages. So these are various, in, in the, in the world we live in and with this client, I think you'll find they're, one, they're very sustainable and very competitive wages.
I think, I, I think that takes us through council members. And it's hard for me to see if anybody else is raising their hand because... because Howard did note, and I think he noted to everyone, that the Highway 80 project is going to be split between 2022 and 2024. And I know the first part of that project is starting south and then coming north on 80. So I think there'll be plenty of time for planning relative to that. So I think that probably is all the questions. So you have no further questions? Joe didn't have questions. Nobody had questions of Joe. Adam, do you have anything further?
No, I think just as we've all said, this has been one of our obviously strategic plan items is to, you know, get people into our industrial parks. So city staff and obviously Pedic have been working with these groups. And again, just to not divulge any of the confidentiality, we're going to be cautious in obviously what we say here. But so far, it's been a it's been a very good partnership and very good meetings. And a lot of the questions that came up tonight have been ones that have been discussed with a lot of the parties. So hopefully, as as we continue to move forward here, we'll be able to kind of, you know, answer anything that was that was asked tonight.
Okay, and I want to thank city staff for the tremendous amount of work that they've done with Skanel. And Patrick, thank you to you and your team. Of course, we all believe Platteville is the best place in the world. And we are delighted to try since you are the same. So I thank you, Patrick, and Dan, and David, and Chris for joining our meeting tonight. And we will have this as a item for action on the Plan Commission Agenda, which is Monday, the first of February. So the Plan Commission will review this. That's a normal practice for us. And then from the Plan Commission, it will come back to the council at first meeting in February. And I'm looking for my calendar so I get the date right, which is February 9th for the lot consolidation and and those kinds of things. So I I I think that probably is it. And again, thank you for, thank you for all the work that you've done and to our staff for their work.
Well, we appreciate everybody's time. We're excited. And if this does move forward, I think you'll find that this occupier would be a great, a great addition and a great neighbor. So we look forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
Great. And of course, we welcome you to continue to stay with us if you want. But if you leave, we won't be offended as we move on down through our agenda, the next item being our discussion about our incubator. So again, thank you to Patrick and David and Chris and Dan for joining us tonight. And we'll look forward to seeing you in February.
Yep, thank you very much.
Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda, Ms. Kate. Platteville Business Incubator upgrades.
Yes, very good. Are you able to see my screen with the beautiful logo? I hope so.
We sure are.
Very good. So thank you for allowing us to be on the agenda this evening. I have two teammates presenting with me. We're going to be talking about what's going on at the incubator. And what we're doing is seeking your ideas, your opinions, and presenting these options as a way we see could bring value. So we're going to start the conversation with Scott Chico, who is a incubator graduate and president of our board. So Scott.
All right, thanks, Kate. Can everybody hear me okay? All right, perfect. Kate said, keep it short, so keep it short. I haven't had a chance to talk to the council since being president of the incubator, so I thought I'd just say a few words as far as the importance of the support that the city has provided the incubator. I've been there for the incubator for a long time. And it's been it's been very important to help the incubator thrive. So we're appreciative of what you've been doing in the support. The project that Kate and Tammy are going to go over is a renovation project. Not asking for any money from the city for this. It's more information. And I just kind of wanted to at least come before the board and say thank you for your support and appreciate all that you do for us.
Great, thank you, Scott. So I'm going to do the first part of the presentation, and then Tammy will do all the heavy lifting and she'll get to show all the magic. So that'll be pretty great. So my name is Kate Cozio, and I'm the executive director of the Platteville Business Incubator. I'm also an economic development specialist at the Southwestern Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission. And I'm going to give you just a quick history, and we're going to make this super fast. So it's going to be like Petchacootcha, right? Here we go, off we go. So here's a brief history of the incubator world. The city of Platteville and regional leaders had a vision, and I don't mean like hallucinations, but had like a dream and a plan and a way to grow. We've had 70 occupants, 70 tenants since opening in 2001 is when we took on our first tenant, which happened to be Pedic. In the 20 years that we've been operating, we've had been able to provide 249 years of affordable business rental space. We have anywhere from 10 to 25 tenants at any given time. Of those 70 tenants that we've graduated through the building, 42 are remain active, and they currently employ 382 people. We currently have 18 tenants with us in the building. So show me the money. Just looking at the top seven graduates coming out of the incubator, one happens to be Delta 3. They're listed there on your screen, OneUp USA, Four X Innovations, Applied Micro, Avista, Delta 3, of course, Fastenal, and LNM Corrugated. Those seven tenants alone, or graduates, I should call them, have a current payroll of $22 million. They pay $117,000 in property tax. They sit on real estate worth $5.5 million. They pay 719 in local taxes and 1.8 million in local state and federal taxes. So the money that you invest in the incubator year after year, and I echo Scott's thoughts, it is it's so important to us. We're reinvesting it, and we're having great graduates come through the through the building. I stand on the shoulders of an incredible board of great past directors. Ed White really left me a gem to work with, and I'm thankful for that. In my last three years, we've done a few little tweaks. We have upgraded like the logo so that we're more part of the whole Platteville family. We've done strategic planning with the board. We are now have twice yearly board member mentor meetings. So every tenant is matched with a board member mentor yearly, twice yearly educational sessions. We've expanded marketing and outreach to continue to grow the popularity. The picture is of an incubator fest, which we had a few years ago to try and drive up some interest and energy and excitement. So what do we do now? Now we need to prep for the next 20 years. We have historically low interest rates currently. The building has a very high value, but we have deferred maintenance issues that need to be addressed. Otherwise, we're going to depreciate our greatest asset that we have. And workforce settings are changing and evolving, and we need to stay current with the trends. So we've had some ideas, and we're going to present some options, and we're looking for your impact, your input. Take it away, Tammy.
All right, so one of the things that we decided to do was some upgrades or some refreshing of the exterior of the building. Not a lot, but just a little bit along the front, adding some canopies over the doors and then also adding a build out around the main entrance so that it's more visible. It helps with wayfinding. So people know, hey, this is the entrance. This is where I should go into the incubator. Right now, it's a long building with lots of doors, and we just want to make it very clear and inviting. Then we're also doing some interior corridor changes, some upgrades. The pictures are what the corridor is right now. And we're looking at doing some new epoxy flooring with a couple different colors to break up that long expanse and to highlight the tenant spaces. We'll be highlighting the entrances to the tenants with color on the walls and also a little bit of a build out to get it, give it some interest and some ceiling clouds over those tenant areas as well. We'll paint the rest of the structure black up above. And then we'll also add some new signage along the hallway so that when you're looking down the hall, you'll be able to see which tenants are where. Should be very clear. And then we're also, so if you look at the floor plan, the green shows the hallway and corridor that we're going to be upgrading with the paint and the flooring. Then the blue area, the blue, the yellow, and the orange is all one space right now. And so it's one great big tenant space that's not used. It's currently vacant. And there's a big break room and some restrooms as well that no one else can access. So what we're doing is we're opening up off of the corridor to create this co-working break room space for all of the tenants and also have more access to more restrooms. And it also will invite people from the community to be able to come in and use the space on a daily or monthly basis. If they need a place to work that's not home and it's not all the way in Madison or wherever their office is, they might be able to have a spot to sit. But it also creates these two, the orange and the yellow, two more office areas that we can lease out. They're a little bit smaller. One's 1,200 square feet, one's about 1,700 square feet so that you have a more realistic size for a smaller group coming in to start with. And then in case the co-working, which we're anticipating, will become quite popular, we might need more space. So in the future, we have it set up so that we can add dedicated desk space next to that co-working break room space so that people can come and lease a desk with a file cabinet perhaps that's lockable, and it's just their space, give them a little more spot, personal spot that they can use. And then we still have the two office spaces, the orange and the yellow above that they can use or we can lease out for tenants. So those are our ideas. We're still working through the details, but that's where we're at right now.
Thank you, Tammy. I I can easily say that Delta 3 has been just terrific to work with. We've had consistent board meetings and really just it's been a real team effort from the whole board and the team at Delta 3, very, very valuable relationship we have. So financing the work, how are we going to finance it? We currently are going to, our plan is to consolidate the existing loans of about 75,000 and 16,000 and take on a new mortgage at at 3% with these low interest rates. We'll pay off those old loans with that same amount, and that'll leave us about 3,000, 357,000. Our plan is to reinvest about 340,000 into the maintenance items and then refreshing some of the spaces. So why are we doing it at this time? Deferred maintenance has been deferred too long. We don't have a lot of extra cash up at the incubator. Unlike other commercial buildings, when you let a tenant go, you're able to raise your rents. Every time we let a tenant go, we've dropped rates again to bring in a first-year person, which is exactly the purpose of it, but it doesn't leave us a lot of cash bandwidth to do things that need to be done. And so now we've just, we've come to a point where we feel like it's time that that needs to be taken care of. These new co-working spaces and potentially future dedicated desk rental provide new revenue streams. If we rent one of those desks, the square footage is $3.84 per square foot. Our current square foot rental for a brand-new desk, a brand-new office, is 56 cents a square foot. So they're a little bit of a cash cow if we can make it happen. So this is all sort of thinking of the future, how will this work? And we're going to price it so there won't be any cannibalization of our current tenants wanting a desk. We're going to price it in a way that it makes sense for people to stay where they are and to create this sort of feeder model where they'll start with just a chair, then they'll want a desk, then they'll want an office, and then they'll become like another magical company. So and this new layout allows us to provide access to unused kitchens and bathrooms and really increase flow. So as Scott started off the conversation, thank you for your support over the years and for your time this evening. Are there any questions or suggestions from anyone present?
Okay, folks, first of all, thank you, Kate. Thank you, Scott. It's always good to see a graduate of the of the incubator, and thank you, Tammy. So questions of Tammy, Scott, and or Kate? Isaac, we'll start with you.
No questions.
Okay, or suggestions? I guess it would be questions and suggestions. Any suggestions?
No suggestions either. They're they're the experts.
Okay. Kathy?
Oh, I don't really have any suggestions, but thank you for the presentation. It was amazing to see all those numbers and and see what, how successful it's been over the years. So good job out there. I know that this has to be a tough decision to make this next leap, but I stepped, but I really think it's definitely in the right direction and and give you guys a lot of credit for taking that on.
Jason?
No questions.
Or suggestions?
No.
Okay, Eileen?
Having been at the incubator a number of times, yes, definitely. I think that having all those doors on that one side of the building can be very confusing. So I like the idea of a more definite entrance. I think good design and also seeing the long hallway and, you know, just seeing that long hallway. I think, you know, also the the floor coverings and the doors and the colors. Tammy, good job.
Ken, any questions or suggestions?
Well, I have a couple of questions. First of all, I'll comment and say it looks like the inside, we, the reconstruction, whatever you call it, looks appropriate. My question is, what's the outside like as far as have you considered anything in the way of solar panels? Does this, does this building have solar panels such as Emmy Roth has put in a couple of years ago? What's been your thinking about trying to get some energy produced?
I I would love it. Let's defer it to the engineers who could talk cost versus benefit considerations.
Well, Tammy had a lead list there, so I'm not sure if she could answer.
Yeah, I do have a lead list. Solar panels are fabulous. And they really do help with the energy consumption of a building and the carbon footprint. However, they do cost money to install. And so I think that that is a real hurdle right now. I'm trying to get them on this building or buy the building is because of the cost. Scott, thoughts?
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's a good question, Ken. It's just unfortunately, our funds are pretty limited, as you can see by the presentation. By the time we do the deferred maintenance, almost half of our budget is used up, over half of our budget is used up. So then what's left over is trying to create this co-working space so we can move the full incubator forward into a different avenue of of revenue that we can possibly generate and possibly the world that we live in today. It just makes things look a little bit different. So we're trying to adjust for that. And we're thinking the co-working space is the way to do it. So that's pretty well, the upgrades on the inside, the deferred maintenance, and then getting the co-working space set up the way we need it. And we're pretty well tapped. Our money is used up.
Okay, thank you.
But I suspect Tammy and Scott and Kate that if somebody had a gift they wanted to give, that you would take it with open arms, right? If somebody came to you and said, listen, in my benevolence, I want to put solar panels on that building. Tammy, I love that smile.
I just want to see the gift.
You just want to see the gift. I hear you. Robin, any questions or suggestions?
No, I guess just a thank you for the incubator staff and all who put effort into that space. You know, it's not a space I go to frequently, but the times I've been there, I've been really proud and excited and grateful that it's there. It's a really practical building, but I feel like it does need a little bit of, I'm trying to not use a certain sex appeal word, but like to draw people in, that exciting factor when you're starting a new business or want to bring people in for a meeting. I think that the remodel kind of turns it into a back office into like a little more of like arriving at a hotel or something. You know, it just felt a little more professional and polished, and I think that will up the standard of all the conversations that happen in that space to some level. I think it's it's nice, it's warranted. I'm curious, when you're saying deferred maintenance, I feel like I missed some obvious like repairing a roof or some conversation there that you must have on your list. But I'm just kind of hearing the remodel stuff. And thanks for being innovative and recognizing that it looks like offices have changed this year and what people expect. And so it's good to know that you're on that point and really trying to imagine how that's going to work for everyone going forward, so.
Yeah, and we could tell you about the rusty doors, the leaky windows, the pipes. We've, we hit a lot of wind and weather up there. And Tammy has seen every corner pulled back walls. We do have quite a laundry list, but it's not as interesting as the gorgeous pictures. So we just went with the gorgeous pictures and really it's been a collaborative conversation. Hila and I started chatting about this, gosh, in like May, I think. And then the board jumped on and it's been a long thoughtful process. And we'd be happy to share that lovely detailed spreadsheet with you, Robin, if you're trying to get to sleep some night.
I do have a question, it appears that the two new office spaces. If you put in the rented desk and the coworking space, do those two new office spaces then open on the north side of the building? Instead of on the south side? So they would not use the common hallway, is that correct? Did I look at that right?
So they, they have access from the north side because all the offices on the north side of the building have their own external door from the exterior. But they also have access to the hallway through the coworking space.
Through the, okay, through the correction, yeah. Okay. Okay. All right, that was just my only, my only observation. So was that the primary door appears to be on the north side.
Yeah.
Good.
And by expanding some of that access to the north, it'll also help us diversify where people park. So that'll be good as we get more traffic.
That's true.
I have another energy question.
Ken has an energy question.
What is the inside like as far as the walls, are the walls insulated? This came up to me because when I moved here, I moved into a house that had cement block walls, no insulation. So what is this building insulated as far as the walls or the R, what?
I don't know exactly what the R value of it is, when it was built 20 years ago, it was insulated per code at that time. And it still stands and it's still insulated. So we have, it's not an uninsulated building, it's heated well. And then I also wanted to know, one of the deferred maintenance items that we're doing is, in some of the spaces that we're touching, we're replacing the lighting to LED lighting, which will help reduce the energy bills as well.
Okay, well Kate, Tammy and Scott, thank you. Very interesting to have a presentation and not a request for money. Hila, I see you've raised your hand, did you have something you would like to add to the conversation?
No, I was just clapping, I was just clapping.
You were clapping?
That's what that means.
That's what that means, okay, she was clapping. So Hila's clapping for you, we can all clap for you too, but. But we look forward to your next incubator class when all of this is, when all of this is done. So again, thanks Scott, Tammy and Kate.
Great, thank you.
Okay, and we'll move on to our next information and discussion item, which is inclusivity, diversity and equity updates. Adam?
Yeah, so obviously again, this is our recurring agenda item that we have, which kind of dives into inclusivity, diversity and equity. So the big one obviously is what happened today with Council President Doss formerly appointing the members of the TIDE task force. So what I will be doing is reaching out to those members and trying to schedule a meeting here in February to kickstart that. And again, that, you know, is, we encourage as many people from the community to get involved in that. And what we're trying to do with this committee, as we've said, is, is find out ways to have kind of an open forum that is not going to be, you know, like our council meetings that have to follow state statutes and be very, you know, stuck in the, you know, partly pro procedures. The point of these meetings is to be much more open and allow for kind of conversations to occur. To talk about, you know, issues that we're having in the community. One of the big ones, obviously, that is in our strategic plan with this group is to have this group, you know, start looking at policies and procedures that they would like to see reviewed by the staff and also by the council. But then also to consider, you know, events and different ways of how we, you know, should be acknowledging whether it's holidays. So one of the things that is bridging off of this is Council President Doss and I are going to be having a meeting on Friday with some members of the community to talk about different ways that the city could honor, you know, holidays, whether it's Martin Luther King or specifically, you know, Black History Month. So we're going to kind of be reaching out to see, you know, specifically what we could do with that. And our hope is that this committee could be, as part of our strategic plan, again, is looking at to create some form of an event that could be, you know, brought to the community that involves inclusivity, diversity and equity. So we will continue to kind of move with that and look forward to having those first meetings with the group of people that were with that. Obviously, the second one on here is Jamie Collins. So for the council members that had the work session, got to listen to the presentation that was given by Jamie in regards to the LGBTQ community and how to become an ally. The staff went through that about a week ago on the 13th. And we have a couple of follow-up meetings that we're looking to schedule now with the Southwest Rainbow Alliance. Where if you look in the packet, there's kind of some areas that we identified, particularly, we'd like our police department to kind of work with specifically the Southwest Rainbow Alliance, because one of the things that was identified was obviously when somebody is pulled over, they may not represent what's on their driver's license. So those are things that, you know, we wanted to consider and look through and, okay, how, how do we approach that? Or how are ways that our officers can, you know, be trained and understanding, you know, what already is, you know, when anybody gets pulled over, it's already a stressful situation. And now you add a layer of, you know, as kind of Jamie said, you're adding layers of complexity onto these issues. So we're also looking at that in other areas as far as public works. Our parks department obviously is one that we want to kind of meet with them because that is one that has been very based in gender specifics. You know, it's either, you know, boy or girl, male or female that are signing up for, you know, activities. So those are things we want to talk to that community to see how are ways that we can better make, you know, our programs and our forums more, more accommodating. The last one obviously is to kind of do some building walkthroughs that we want to do with the Southwest Rainbow Alliance to discuss, you know, ways that we can make our buildings obviously more inclusive. And when we're looking into, you know, whether it's redesigns or things, take those items that, you know, specifically Jamie talked about in the meeting about being inclusive. And take those into account when we do building projects. So there's that. And then the last one, obviously, that we've been working on is the bias reporting discussions. So this Thursday, we'll kind of have our first formal meeting with that, where myself as city staff, we'll be meeting with UW Platteville staff and the Platteville School District. And that again, is going to kind of be a continual meeting that we hope to have to just be a discussion point to talk about matters of inclusivity, diversity and equity that we hear from the community. And kind of look at, you know, best practices and ways that all three of our organizations can kind of work together to continue that journey. So that's the update I have for you.
Okay, questions or comments from anyone? Wave if you have a question or a comment. Robin, unmute yourself.
Unmuted, no. Thanks for the update, Adam. I had a thought with the bias incident reporting team. Not that I am the first one that's going to be able to offer myself up with more time to attend such things. But I was curious about public, just citizen participation in that. Because it kind of looks like it's exclusively leadership team constructed panel. And I didn't know if rotating council members or specifically getting some volunteers that were less. I don't know, I guess I feel like those meetings could tend to be a closed door session assumed. Not that they would be, but when they look at, you know, who is participating and how did they manage that incident? I think it would be nice to have some more general population participation if possible. And I'm not saying council members are that, but we are supposed to be representatives of our, of citizen content. So just a thought I was having, not sure what to do with it, but felt I should express it.
Yeah, I think that's something, something that I can certainly talk with the group about. I know they're, you know, right now it's myself and the chief. I don't think there would be any issue with a council member, if a council member wants to be a part of those discussions, that is not an issue whatsoever. I know as far as getting more public participation, I think that's definitely something I'll discuss with them because I know there are some, you know, some of the things that they're talking about, I think, as we indicated, it could be somewhat confidential regarding if it's, you know, the school district. There are certain things that they can't divulge and same thing, there may be some things from a police standpoint that I'm not aware of that may not be able to be divulged. But I think the goal, as you kind of indicated Robin, is how do we take this organization and potentially have it to be, you know, how do we get some more of that public participation or public input? So that's something I'll definitely bring past them and see kind of what the feedback is.
Thank you, sorry not to present the problem without a solution, just something I'm thinking about.
Okay, anybody else, wave your hand if you have any other questions or comments. And I would just of course, again, add that I appointed the first group to the TIDE task force. But if there are other people that are interested as this group meets, then by all means, we will make consideration for that. So, okay, and COVID-19 update, Adam?
Yeah, so this is the other kind of standing item we've added to the agenda now, just to continually give you updates on everything that we're dealing with with COVID-19. So obviously, the numbers I had in here were as of January 20th, but I can give you the most up-to-date ones I have as of now. So as of today, the past 14 days, Grant County has averaged 11.1 confirmed COVID-19 cases. As of 4:00 PM today, there have been 4,460 total confirmed COVID-19 cases. There's been 4,237 that have recovered. There are currently 625 probable cases and those primarily are the rapid testing that was done. That continues to be kind of questionable as to whether or not if anybody may be positive or could be. So that primarily is what hits those numbers. And then as of today, unfortunately, we have had 78 total deaths of people that tested positive and then five total deaths of persons who were probable case. So the university obviously has just gotten kind of back into session as of this week. So they have kind of split their data into two, so they have fall data and now spring. So their spring data is as of today, I believe as of yesterday, they have tested 1,659 total students out of their health services. They've had seven students test positive, they've had two that have tested positive that are external, so they're not on campus. They have not had any employees as of yesterday test positive. So those numbers will kind of continue to be updated and monitored. Again, some of the things are hospital information, so hospitals in Wisconsin are currently utilizing 82% of staff, staffed available beds and 23% of ICU capacity. Grant County hospitals continue to report that COVID-19 related ER urgent care visits and inpatient admissions have declined from what was considered kind of a November peak. One of the big things obviously that in our meetings with the university is the UW Platteville surge testing ended on January 22nd. So that no longer is occurring. So what is happening now is the county-sponsored community testing is basically handling COVID-19 tests. So they are occurring on Tuesdays in Lancaster and then Fridays here, obviously at the Platteville Armory. That is going to be going on until mid-March and then they will kind of reevaluate it at that time to see where things are currently standing. Occasionally, they do tend to still do some testing in Dodgeville and Darlington. But otherwise, if somebody would need to have a test, they can, regular testing does continue at the Alliance Energy Center in Madison. Vaccinations obviously are kind of the next big thing that's being talked about. So currently, right now, they've moved into what's considered the Phase 1B, which is now open to all persons 85 years and older. As well as firefighters, police and correction officers. Local healthcare officials are urging patients that this is a very large demographic and it's obviously going to take some time to accomplish this task. At this time, local clinics and hospitals are reaching out to eligible patients. And I've been informed as citizens who have either received their first vaccination or are scheduled to receive their, their first one very soon. The Grant County Health Department obviously has held several mass vaccination clinics, they're pretty much occurring in Lancaster. And they'll continue to do so as vaccine is available. However, they do indicate at this time, the number of people seeking the vaccination is greater than the quantity they typically are receiving. So right now, as of today, I'm aware that we've had about 40-plus firefighters within Platteville's fire department that have been vaccinated. And about 84% of our police department has gone through that process. One of the things that I just got an email, I think about four o'clock, is they're looking to expand. The 1B category was approved for kind of wastewater treatment plant operators and kind of mass transit. So those are things that Director Crawford and I are going to be kind of looking into to see how that will impact those individuals, individuals. The majority of us, obviously, as staff, fall into the 1C category. So we are kind of waiting to see, you know, when that will occur and then we'll start working with either Southwest Health or also Grant County and trying to plan those. And obviously, we'll have to do them in phases so that, you know, our employees have the ability to be prepared in case there would be any side effects. And obviously, we don't want to max vacinate everybody, because then if we do have side effects, we're going to have to close. So we're obviously going to plan that accordingly. Kind of the last thing that kind of occurred is obviously on January 19th, Governor Tony Evers signed Executive Order Number 104, an emergency order number one, which basically established a new statewide public health emergency and face covering requirements. So if you remember, the city of Platteville is currently under a emergency declaration until the end of June. And that's something where we will continue to kind of work with, obviously, the Department of Health Services and Grant County and a lot of our local kind of partners in determining, you know, the steps that need to be taken. But we will continue, as you can see me wearing the mask, we'll continue to have that be the policy that we have in place for all of our municipal buildings. And then obviously, outside in any of our parks, if you cannot social distance enough, that would be a recommendation that we would be asking people to do that. But otherwise, we're going to continue to kind of work with, obviously, all of our health partners to determine kind of next steps when the vaccine, when enough of the population is vaccinated. We'll continue to kind of work with that to see, you know, when we can start looking at, you know, potentially what the recommendations would be if, if masks are no longer required, if they're going to be required. And while obviously, you're bringing that information to the council to kind of consider. And then we continue to have meetings, obviously, with a lot of our partners. So we're still having our, every Monday and Friday, our Emergency Operations City Team, where we meet and kind of talk about issues that are ongoing. And then I continue to be on calls, obviously, with Grant County every week and then also periodic calls every month with various, the League of Municipalities and other entities as well. So that's the update.
Okay, thank you Adam, and I would stress again that the surge testing for the public has ended at UW Platteville. I think last night there was some confusion, confusing news stories when it was noted that interim UW system president, Governor Tommy Thompson said that surge testing was continuing on UW system campuses. And that is true on some campuses, but not all campuses. So I know the university feels very sad when public citizens who are not students, faculty or staff stand in line to get tested at the ALSVIC. And when they get to the door after standing in line, they're told, sorry, we're only testing. You know, this is not open testing for the community. So as Adam said, the community test sites now are in Lancaster and at the Armory in Platteville. And it is every Friday, Adam, at the Armory, every Friday.
Correct.
So help spread that word, that UW Platteville is not doing surge testing for the public. The only testing they're doing now is for their own students, faculty and staff.
We've had family able to utilize the Hy-Vee's in Dubuque for COVID testing and will also be giving Walgreens a try tomorrow. So you can schedule now. I'm not quite clear, you have to give your insurance information, but they say that they're free at Walgreens, so I'll find out for sure tomorrow.
And I think Hardegg also does them. I think Hardegg also does them, and I don't know anything about the pay structure or anything like that. Okay. Okay.
Well, guys. This is for Adam. What about the shortage of vaccine, vaccine? What does it look like as far as how soon we're going to get a better supply? Do they give you any information?
Yeah, so that's definitely something that, uh, continues to be discussed on the calls. So I know yesterday, um, Grant County indicated, um, what they requested, they got about 45% was what they actually received. So I think one of the, one of the things they're really trying to do is coordinate now between the multiple distribution centers that have received the vaccine. So, um, not only, you know, originally when this started, it was really just Southwest, Southwest Hospital and then Grant County were the two big players. But, um, with distribution kind of increasing, uh, there's been reports now that Hardigs is one that is, uh, indicating they're supposed to be getting some vaccine coming very shortly. Um, Walgreens is another one that is kind of working with the county. So there definitely are shortages out there, um, but they are, you know, very much trying to, when they get the vaccine that they are able to get, they're scheduling as many as they can to get out. Um, and when they do that, they're averaging usually about, you know, 300 and 400, um, a day is what they're vaccinating. That's the information we're getting from the county. So they had, um, I think their intentions this week was they got about 700, uh, vials of the vaccine in and they had all of those pretty much filled up as far as scheduled, uh, for Wednesday and Thursday, so tomorrow, uh, and then Thursday. So, um, there definitely does continue to be, you know, concerns about, you know, shortages, but, uh, they're working obviously with the Department of Health Services on trying to, you know, when the vaccine is available, um, they're trying to get it out as quick as they can and then vaccinating as many people as possible.
Okay, and I think, uh, Grant Regional in Lancaster is also a vaccination center. I suspect that most of the hospitals. All right, guys. Well, I think, uh, then we're at the bottom of our agenda. So we're ready, uh, for adjournment, I would say. So, uh, I guess I take the motion.
I'll move to adjourn.
Okay, motion by Jason, seconded by Kent, adjourn. Uh, Candace will vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Gillian?
Yes.
Klein? Stanley?
Yes.
Nickel? Yeah, motion carries.
Okay, and thank you all and special thanks for those who attended the, uh, work session prior to the meeting. Have a great evening.
Bye.